At this time, I call the council meeting to order. We'll have the invocation by Mr. Garber, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. So please stand for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, I lift Corinth up to you that it may continue to lead this area with godly principles and continue to transform our region into what you have intended. Father, we pray for peace and health in our land and wisdom and unity and patience from its leaders. In Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. We do have Mrs. Jackson. Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Erlene Wimbley Jackson, 2107 Bowie Lane, Corinth, Texas, 76210. My concern tonight is still freezing the senior citizens taxes. I'm still asking the council for careful consideration for those taxes. We are concerned that if after we pay for these houses, are we going to even be able to afford them or keep them with the rising costs and taxes? So that's very concerning to us. Also, the impact on seniors. After that mortgage is paid, I'm speaking from experience, I paid for the mortgage, now I'm having a tax bill of over $4,000 a year. That's another bill. And to know that that bill may even rise farther every year after year after year, that impacts me. And with the rising costs and inflation, we're down to pensions now, we're down to social security, and how, you know, this is almost traumatic that we're having to come up with these funds, and if they're not, we don't know we're going to be paying so much every year, and they're going to go up from year to year, that's a concern. And finally, there are over 23,000 people right now in Corinth. 16,343 of them are adults with a median age of 38. But there are only 2,390 seniors here. I don't see how that's impacting the budget or anything else in this city. I'm concerned that we need to look at what can this city do for the senior citizens of Corinth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Catch your vote. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to item number seven, which in the business agenda item, and that is to consider an act on the Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive Agreement with Realty Capital Management, LLC for the development of a mixed-use project in the Agora of Corinth. Ms. Buntzmar.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'll call Elise back, our Economic Development Director, and she will make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm very excited to present the Chapter 380 agreement with Realty Capital. Realty Capital is proposing a mixed-use development on the southwest corner of I-35 and Corinth Parkway. They will invest at least $45 million in total project cost, including land acquisition. They are acquiring the 20-plus acre site on or before December of this year. And the total project will be completed before December 2027. The mixed-use development will include a minimum of 250 multifamily residents and a minimum of 10 multifamily townhomes, 20,000 square feet of commercial space, which can include office, retail, and restaurant, as well as they're working with a developer on an 80-key or 80-room dual-brand hotel. And they will employ at least 15 FTEs. As part of the incentives, they will receive a reimbursement of sales and use tax over the construction of the project for up to 36 months, as well as reimbursement of building permit and inspection fees. I do have to tell you, at this time, on September the 2nd, they did receive the approval of the clomer from FEMA, so that's a fantastic thing. So staff in the EDC recommend that council execute the Chapter 380 agreement with Realty Capital. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 22-09-15-21 for the Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive Agreement as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Item number eight, consider an act on an unimproved property contract with Realty Capital Management, LLC for the purchase of the 20.866 acres for a mixed-use development. Ms. Buntzmar.
Yes, Elise will present this item as well.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you, you have the purchase and sale agreement with Realty Capital for the purchase of 20.859 acres, which is located at the southwest corner of I-35 and north Corinth, I mean Corinth Parkway, I apologize, for a mixed-use development, which I just spoke about. Realty Capital is planning on closing on the property on or before December 30th of this year, and staff recommends that city council approve the contract as presented.
Is there any question from council? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2209-1522 for the purchase and sale agreement of approximately 20.859 plus or minus acres from the Corinth Economic Development Corporation to Realty Capital Management, LLC, and authorizing the interim city manager and the CEDC president to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be going into a public hearing. I conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and act on rezoning requests by the applicant. Elsever Real Estate to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code of the city from SF4 Single Family Residential and C1 Commercial to a planned development with two-based housing districts to include MF3 Multifamily Residential and NSF4 Single Family Residencies on approximately 58 acres located on the south side of Lake Sharon Drive and generally west of Trinity Terrace and Dickinson Drive, north of Custer Road and Meadowview Drive, and east of Zachary Drive, case number ZAPD 22-002-Lake Sharon Mixed Residential, LSMR. Okay. Mr. Holsworth is going to have to accuse himself from this public hearing and voting on this issue. I would like to just get a couple ground rules set tonight for this public hearing. Staff will present to the council this development. The developer will present to the council. We will have a public hearing, at which time, I believe you have several of you would like to get up and speak. The rules are, you speak for three minutes, state your name and your address for the records, and then after that, after the public hearing, developer can respond back to any of the issues that you at the public hearing raised. At this time, we'll go into a presentation by our staff.
John Webb, representing the Development Services Department. You had the staff report that was filed with you in your agenda packet, so I know we have a lot of citizens that want to speak. The applicant, of course, needs to make a presentation, so I'm not going to go over to detail, but just kind of highlight, you know, some of the major issues that were noted in the staff report. The site predominantly zoned single-family four. As you know, there are active gas wells on the site, they have a commercial zoning, but generally the site is predominantly zoned for single-family residences. We've been working with applicant for several months on a plan that's predominantly multifamily, but with a ring, what I call, single-family units, 33 single-family units that would ring the exterior of the property adjacent to the other single-family neighborhoods, with the interior of the development with different styles of multifamily development. Now, let the applicant go through, he's got a very good presentation on the types of multifamily development and go through. This plan does keep an open space area around the gas wells. Just to highlight the number of units, 33 single-family, and then various variety of what they call the big house units. These are two-story apartments that have an appearance of a home, your more traditional three-story garden-style apartments, a senior living complex, that would be the taller of the buildings, that'd be a four-story. This is an age-restricted development that is permitted under federal law, that you can, through deed restrictions and zoning, restrict the residents to 55 and over, and then the same senior living in a one-story duplex top environment, so a total of 579 units. What I want to touch on tonight in my presentation is that while the comprehensive plan is a guide, we typically try to judge the application and the plans and the standards against the comprehensive plan, knowing that the comprehensive plan is not an ordinance, but we do try to use it as a guide. So our current comprehensive plan really looked at some scenarios at that time they felt was going to create a city center type of environment, and it was called Lake Sharon Central. The area that we're looking at is on the southern part, where you see the numbers eight, nine, and 10. That's the area, subject property, the bottom property. And you're going to look at some scenarios, it talks about the type of unit and residential mix in this area. So the scenario 1C talks about townhomes, those are the areas in the pink, nine being the urban residential, the more higher-density apartments, and then you see 10 being the single-family development. So again, fairly dominant row depth of single-family development adjacent to the neighborhoods, where the multifamily is really kind of centered up into the core area along Lake Sharon. Again, they went into two other options, signaling in on the area, again, south of Lake Sharon. You see the items number five and six, five being urban residential, which is multifamily, that they showed predominantly along Lake Sharon, with a balance of the property generally all single-family. Option two on the right, again, on the south side of Lake Sharon, you see items number seven and eight, townhomes with predominantly single-family residential. What the comp plan talks about in this mixed residential district is a range of housing types, a mix of housing. It talks about going from large lot to small lot, patio home, town home, and then urban residential, which is the multifamily. And so one of the reasons the staff has based their recommendation to denial is that we felt that it didn't meet the spirit and the intent of the comp plan. But the reason I wanted to show the whole balance of this Lake Sharon Central area, predominantly now, the area on the north side of Lake Sharon, where you see quite a bit of multifamily, that transition is now Ashford Park. When the comp plan was being adopted, we did not have the Ashford Park developer in hand. But fairly quickly afterwards, you know, we had a single-family developer that came in and said, "The market in Corinth can support over 400 single-family homes in the neighborhood." That's why we have to adjust and look at comp plans probably at least every five years, because the market changes, conditions change. So what has happened now is, we knew going in that where the subject property was surrounded on the west, south, and east by single-family. Now, it's also going to be dominated by the north, by a very large single-family development. And in just plain words, you know, this is a game changer. This has now had a significant impact on whether or not this Lake Sharon Central philosophy that was, you know, looked at several years ago is really a valid issue. So given the fact that the application is truly not mixed residential, given the fact that the nature of the physical development has changed since the comp plan, staff recommended denial. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on June 27th, had a lot of input. They voted to indefinitely table the application, allow the applicant the opportunity to revise the plan. They held an informal workshop on July 25th to look at this updated plan. At that time, the applicant about tripled the number of single-family homes from 33 to 96, single-family lots. The lots were smaller, though. There was a slight decrease in the multifamily, decrease of 62 units. So that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We later learned from the applicant, not to, afterward, that he wanted to pursue and be back on the August Planning and Zoning Commission agenda, and asked that we move forward with the original plan that was presented to the council, to the commission, on June 27th. So the council, we did duly advertising, we sent notices out again, published notices in the newspaper, sent notices out to properties with turn of feet. P&amp;Z held another public hearing on the 22nd, and upon receiving the testimony from the applicant and the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the zoning change. Per our Unified Development Code, when the Planning and Zoning Commission provides you with a recommendation for denial, it requires a three-four affirmative vote of the voting members of the council. So four members tonight would have to vote in favor of the application for this to be approved. And just as a matter of note, this really is kind of a mute point, because you have the official recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we do have, per state law, the three-four, the same three-four affirmative vote if the owners representing 20% or more of the land area have submitted a written protest, which we do have. Mayor, with that, I'd be glad to answer any technical questions. I know the applicant is here to speak and probably has his own PowerPoint.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Webb? No? No? Okay. I believe, yes, developer.
My name's Sean Elabrando with Elabrando Real Estate. Thank you for your time.
State your address, too, please.
Oh, my address, 1463 Keller Parkway, Keller, Utah, or Keller, Texas, 76248.
Okay, thank you for, that's for the records.
So the, I'm not going to go through, I'll go through as much detail as y'all would like, but I think you've already seen quite a bit about me and about this project, but quickly, we manage, we build and manage apartments, and we also build single-family and hotels and industrial and all different product types. But when it comes to our multifamily, we stay for decades, we hold them for decades, and we pride ourselves in building something that will last, and we try to keep it very nice. And we build it in a way that makes that possible. So as we already went through this, oh, I thought that was mine, we went through the Envision Corinth 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As you know, there's, the mixed residential specifically says a range of single-family from large lot to patio homes to townhomes and multifamily transitions to neighborhood commercial. So I started working on this in October of 2020. It will be two years next month since I contacted the city and staff, and we started with some phone calls, and have been directed since then to follow the Envision Corinth 2040 Communicating with me that multifamily is acceptable, and if you're interested, I have, I can give you a breakdown of exactly what has happened in that two years. But the summary is, we've come up with at least six site plans, and all along, having been told by staff, and granted, I know Mr. Webb came in a year ago, so we were working with Helen Eve initially and her staff, and then, you know, there was a transition. But we've been working on this, like I said, for two years, and have never been told that the multifamily would not be acceptable. Now, during the time that I've been working on this, back in February of, I believe it was February of 21, I believe February of '21, the project across the street was approved in city council. And so we had already started on our project, and at that point, nobody told us, "Now, things have changed, you can't do this anymore." We were told, "You should still follow the site, you should still follow the comp plan," and that's what we did. So we looked at the comp plan, and it says, you need, we're building 6,341 units by 2030, which means 730 units need to be approved every year. And we looked at that, and we haven't seen units approved at 750 per year in Corinth yet. And, you know, you've all read this and the benefits of a little bit higher density in certain areas. And the key focus was the Class A high-end project that the comp plan focuses on. We don't want Class B, we want Class A, top-of-the-top-notch apartments. And that will bring in the most financial benefit to the city. So changing gears for a second, what has changed as of today is buying a $390,000 home, if that's the purchase price, your payment with yesterday's average mortgage rate, which has just broke 6%, is, if you take into account your 3% closing costs, 5% agent commissions, 15% down payment, 1% PMI, the average US mortgage rate, property taxes, insurance, it's $3,800. It's very difficult for someone that only has, 15% is higher than average of a deposit. It's very difficult to get into that. And so if people don't have alternatives, then they'll go where those are. But there are people that want to live in Corinth that can't afford to come up with $3,800 a month. And all of us probably know that by the end of the month, interest rates are going to go up probably three-quarters of a percent, and that will likely put that over $4,000 per month that you have to come up with, and there's not a lot of people that have that. Two years ago, that same exact house was $1,944 a month, making the same assumptions. So the change, the property values have increased 54%, but the big dramatic change is 96% increase in the payment from just two years ago. So times have changed, and demand for single-family, as you all know, has also changed. So with that said, the focus area is this Lake Sharon Central. Now, I believe this comprehensive plan was designed to have, to look at certain sections of the city as a whole. If I were to, if one owner were to own this whole, call it 150 acres, this 150 acres would not likely be, would not likely follow any of these maps as a land use map, but they would understand that the whole 150 acres needs a variety of single-family, including townhomes, patio homes, et cetera, also urban residential, and possibly, you know, residential commercial. So of the three scenarios, the one that has the least multifamily is option one, and the one that has probably the least financial impact for the city is also option one, but it has the least number, at least based on looking at it, it looks like it has the least amount of multifamily. Now, if we were to take all of this property and sell it to five or six people, I don't think you would tell everybody, wherever your land is, that's what you're supposed to use, that it shows on the comp plan. This is a general concept, not focused on what the comp plan says, it's focused on the general principle for the whole 150 acres. And so that's the intent that I understand from the comp plan. Now, the way this is broken down is it has a single-family around the outside, townhomes in the pink, with urban residential in the middle, or apartments. So now, we're going to jump into the project and what I'm proposing. I have a, now, this is a smaller strip of single-family, but it is single-family around the outside, even though the intention of the comp plan was not to use that as a land use map. The intention was, look at the whole picture, the whole 150 acres. And to the north, they have patio homes, they have large and small single-family lots. They have a lot of that mixture of single-family lots, and no multifamily. So now, you cut out the multifamily, what's left is, there's only one place for multifamily, the majority of the land is gone for any multifamily in this Lake Sharon Central. So there's the single-family around the perimeter, and the pink buildings around, on the inside of the single-family are the big house. Those are designed to be townhomes. And there's, it's a creative design of a townhome in that you have somebody's kitchen above somebody else's garage, but they all have a private entrance and a private garage, just like a townhome. So as far as using it, it's exactly like a townhome. But as far as the construction, it's designed to look much better than rows of townhomes, and instead, it looks like one beautiful single-family home next to another beautiful single-family home, and pairs perfectly across the street from single-family instead of townhomes. So I think this is, what I'm proposing is better than townhomes, but very similar. And then there's the, you know, 168, the orange buildings on the left, 168 traditional apartments, and then the four-story seniors. So, and by the way, it's a 62 and older, age-restricted, market-rate project with five duplexes to the north of it. So you may have seen these before, but this is the rendering of the senior living community. This is the three-story, they're not, they're not like traditional garden-style, like you've seen elsewhere. These are a little bit nicer, but as far as how we use them, it's very similar. But you don't see stairwells from the outside, that's what you typically see in garden-style. And then these are the big house. This is really, I think, a big part of the question, are these townhomes, or are they not townhomes? Now, we already looked at this site plan, and we talked about this, how this is designed, if we're going to use this as a land use map and not take into account the overall approximately 150 acres. I could be way off on the acres, by the way, but you get the idea, it's the Corinth Central. So on the right here, we have traditional townhomes. This is where the walls go, you can put a parcel line around it, and they go straight up, and so you know that, you know, this is the boundary, all the way back, there's a small parcel. That's a traditional townhome. And then on the upper left, we have the big house. When I look at the two, I think this feels better next to single-family. That's my opinion, maybe it's not yours. With that said, if the main objection is that I'm not building what's on the bottom right compared to the top left, I can build townhomes. I can get a very similar density, it's not that much different, I just don't think it's as nice. So until July, I, so again, I've been working on this, next month will be two years, until two months ago, I had not known that without traditional townhomes and patio homes, this would not be supported by staff. So I just learned that in July. So, and like I said, I'm happy to make changes as the council recommends, but I don't know what those changes need to be, and that's really, so I would like this to be approved as is, but if you say, "What we would really like to see is townhomes, not the big house", done, I'll change it. If you would like to, and if there's something else, I'm open, but I just don't have the direction to know what will be approved. So, so now, this is what I proposed to the, to the Planning Commission, to Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, this is hard to see, I know, because it's black and white, so anyone that has already seen this, it's just a bunch of lines, but let me just tell you what I changed. So now you see on the outside, two rows of single-family, and the single-family lots are smaller. The ones on the outside are larger than the ones on the inside, but they are smaller than what I had previously. And like Mr. Webb said, this went from 30-some lots to over 90, almost 100 lots. And so we also, in this plan, lost about three and a half acres of open space. So the single-family obviously takes up more room than the multifamily, so we ended up having to lose some of that open space. But, so you see the single-family around the outside- But, so you see the single family around the outside and then we moved, all the big house are around, are, are next to that, just like we had previously. But those are hidden now, they're behind somebody's backyard, so it's not fronting a single-family home. And then on the inside of the big house, we have the four-story building and, and the three-story apartments. So you just step in with each one. So to make this a little bit easier to see and compare it to the comp plan, I put this together. So this is essentially what I'm proposing, and it's, I tried to match the colors, so it was kind of similar. And, and so you see there's a lot of green space, you have on the outside, the single row of single family, and then the pink is the townhomes, and then you have the urban residential in the four-story building here and here. So this is the proposed plan. And this is what I brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So now we have two rows of single-family townhomes or, or big house. And like I said, I'm happy to change those to townhomes or some portion of them, if, if so needed. So when I put these three next to this plan, the question is, are the big house considered urban residential or are they considered townhomes? If they're considered townhomes, when I look at this one, the one I proposed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the main difference I see is that there's more green space. And, you know, you still have single family, there's a little bit less single family on this south portion, but it's pretty darn close. And, and that's what I, so that's what I presented, but after the meeting, staff told me that I still needed patio homes, townhomes, and, and a variety of single-family lot sizes. So, so when I kind of interpret that, I feel like this is really close. Now, if I need to make it closer, again, I don't think that this is meant to be a land use plan, I am happy to do that, I just need the direction as to what needs to change specifically. So we talked about the difference between these two, but I think that might be the crux of this issue. If this, if, if those, if the big house is a townhome, then it's fine. If it's not, then we can switch it all out for townhomes and do what you see on the bottom right. The, the amenity package here is second to none in the county, okay? This, this amenity package, well, every unit will be a smart home, they will have their own home security system, they will all be very environmentally friendly, will have a significant solar array, and they will all be very highly efficient units. They'll have, many of them will have, all the, 240 units will have an attached direct-access garage, and there will also be detached garages available. There's lots of covered parking, elevators in the seniors, just dog parks, spa, I could go on and on, I won't read through all of these, but there's lots, sports courts, pools, all the amenities that you could hope for. And one of the biggest differences in townhomes, for example, is if you go to a townhome property for rent or for sale, they usually don't have any amenities. A seniors apartment complex usually has very few amenities because they typically are smaller in unit sizes. So you can't justify this quality of amenity package. So with this size, with this scale, I'm able to provide one of the best amenity packages you could hope for, which will draw people here and, and provide a fantastic Class A project. I've already talked about why I think I, as a developer, could add value to the city and in, with this project, so I won't go over that again. But the conclusions, and this is my last slide, I believe this follows the envisioned Corinth comprehensive plan. And if it doesn't, I'm very willing to do what it takes to meet that plan, I just need to know what I need to do. And as we work through this, staff recommended that I ask council, what is it that you would like to see if this, if you believe it does not meet the comp plan? And, and as, as, as Mr. Webb also mentioned, I've, I've made many changes to these plans according to the comments that were given us, and we've had three round of, three rounds of comments. And we, I believe we've changed everything in those three rounds of comments. And so the, the comment about this not meeting the comp plan wasn't in any of those comments. It was made on the phone and in person. And we, I've also canvassed the neighborhood, I've made various changes, I can go into the details if you're interested, based on what neighbors have, have asked for. And I also have, I believe it's 80, it might be a little bit more, but at least 80 letters of support. This project, and this calculation is over a year old, but will generate an additional $2.5 million in property tax and an additional $15 million in discretionary income, some of that will be spent locally and support local jobs and businesses. The additional density, as you know, attracts retailers and that retail sales tax helps the city and all those things, as you know, help to lower the whole community's property taxes. I, I, I would request that you support this project and, and vote to approve it. And if you choose to not approve it, I would just request that you, instead of just denying it without any feedback or direction, give me the direction that you would like to see to change this. So I would just request that you table it with direction on what needs to change so that I know what I can do to make this fantastic for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll be going into the public hearing now. At this time, I would just want to be upfront about it, the council will not be responding to any questions from the podium during the public hearing, we're here just to listen to what your comments are. And I have a list of individuals here, again, state your name and your address and you'll, you'll have three minutes to speak on this particular subject. First person is Michael King.
Hello, Mayor, hey, Council, hello, city staff, thank you all. Michael King, 2610 Zachary Drive. First, I'd like to, I know she won't answer, but I'd like the city, from a legal standpoint, to address the oil wells and the setback ordinances. Is it 500, 600, or 1,000? Are we going to cap wells or are we not? I think the city owes that to the citizens. Number two, I just heard many conversations about the developer having conversations with the city, going back and forth on do this, do that, change this, change that. And it was stated that there was never any negative feedback from the city. The developer stated he started this project in April or August, October of 2020. I just reviewed my emails, me and the developer had our first email November 9th, 2020. There was feedback, not from city staff, but from many residents. As you guys know, I'm the voice of many residents that are very unhappy. The saddest part of this is, we're not here to hurt Mr. Braun, the landowner. We've said it many times, we wish the city, the residents, and the property owner could get together and come out to something equitable for all people involved. Not just the developer that wants to come put two, you can call them townhomes, you can call them big homes, you can call them whatever you want. I've heard there's 27 different plans, they're apartments. We've never been able to get any answers who the builder is of the homes. Are they going to be long-term sale? They're going to turn into rentals like Almost Falcon Place in Lake Dallas, when I worked with Mayor Andy Nolan? What about the apartments? I was called a liar when I stated that there was conversations about apartments being short-terms level rentals. Person said I lied, that that was never said. That conversation took place at 10:30 at night and a resident knocked on my door, handed me a thumb drive with a video and audio that it was stated. That's our concerns. As far as this population density, from the resident standpoint, I'll let many more speak, I'll speak for me. We don't want the saturation of density. We don't want that density population. I'll give this final example, when one of the engineers stated that we were talking about the roundabouts, and he said, Mr. King, you disagree that the roundabouts will help with the increased flow of traffic on Lake Sharon? I said, no, sir, I don't disagree with that. What I disagree is that the residents don't want the increase of flow of traffic. My last 20 seconds, I want to support Ms. Earlene, me and her have spoke many times, I wish you guys would take in consideration her proposal to either at least give a reduction, if not eliminate. City of Corinth, in the city of, in county of Denton, Lake Dallas Independent School District is the highest tax rate. The city of Corinth.
Thank you. Jeremy Young. Please state your name and your address, please.
Jeremy Young, 2608 Zachary Drive. Thank you, everyone, for letting us speak today. So I don't have slides, but I did pull out some stuff. So today I went up online to get the most current cost of getting a mortgage. So I went to Forbes and I went to Chase Mortgage. Worst-case scenario, I don't know how to buy a home, $450,000 home, single-family home, zero down, six, 6.38%, insurance at 420, that's 335 a month, property tax 7,500, 625 a month, that monthly is going to be 3,600 to 3,700. Now I went back and I said, well, I at least know how to buy insurance and I'm going to put 20, 20% down, which is typically mandatory. With all that said, it was 2,900 and 3,100, if I remember correctly, one of your rentals is 2,900. I also went to Realtor.com Research, April 1st, or, yeah, April 1st, 2022, they did a research on rentals. So far, the overall national increase is 21% in rental cost. Studio apartments 15, one-bedroom 20, two-bedroom 24%. Forbes also questioned all the millennials who are currently staying in the rental homes what their biggest concerns were. They said the concerns right now are they feel rentlocked because the cost has gone so high, it's not allowing them to save for homes. So their, their only option is to pay for these rentals. Then I also went to Realtor.com Research, 2022 National Housing Forecast. Their forecast says that millennials are leaving the metroplex, those who can afford it, for suburban homeownership, that would be us. Millennials are the largest home purchasing group at 45 million. Home sales are at a 16-year-high and their expected sales growth in 2022 to be 6.6% in homes. So that is showing you that people want to buy homes. And that's what we need in our community, our homes. We are small, we're not Louisville, we're not Denton, we're small. Our economy, our economy here does not support six figures, the largest employer are you guys, the local government, okay? Everybody that owns a home here, most of them drive outside of the community to go to work and then they come out here to get away from the hustle and bustle. That is what makes Corinth great. We have a community, we have neighbors, we get out of the hustle-bustle, if we want to go do something, we can go downtown, we can go to some of the other larger cities, and then we get to come home and relax and we don't have to put up with it. That is what the millennials are doing, they're late to the picture because of economy, because of COVID, but that generation is doing what we did when we were young. And they're next in line, and that's what they're looking for, homes. And that's what we should be building them, homes. Now, I have no doubt the developer's going to make some beautiful stuff and I'm not against it. I'm not against the apartment complex being built, I just don't want it in my backyard. I live on Zachary and where he has that development, I'm going to get up every morning, every night and look out that window and see it. My suggestion is, is like the other four apartment complexes out here, we should be moving that to the external, to where the artery of the city is, like every other apartment complex.
Thank you. Alana Fickis.
Alana Fickis, I live at 2712 Cherokee Trail. I'm against the Lake Sharon mixed residential development, apartments should not be in the middle of a single-family area. I am for single-family homes in that area and I would like to see the 2040 plan changed to reflect single-family homes only in this area. I also agree that the senior taxes should be frozen, thank you.
Thank you. Austin Ortega.
Good evening, Austin Ortega, 2801 Custer Drive. I actually may be the only millennial in the room. And a piece, a piece of that, I work in a team in cybersecurity with only other millennials. I'm the only one who owns a home. I ask them why, guys, have you not bought a house yet? And they go, can't afford them. We work for a mortgage company, we even get a discount on, on the rates, can't afford them. There aren't enough houses currently for my generation to buy houses. It's become a concern here when the children of the people, of the residents of Corinth can't live in Corinth unless they're renting. What's the long-term goal for that? I mean, ideally for me, I believe personally, that owning a home is the greatest thing you can do for your equity and for the long-term benefit of your family. I have two small children, the, buying a home put us in the position where we are today to actually have those children, and I'm glad to be in Corinth. I'd like that opportunity to exist for more of my generation and more people overall, to be able to have a home that they can come home to that's theirs, that is, is a property that they own. I'm a strong proponent of neighbors, I share meals with my neighbors, a bag of cookies came over the fence for my children. And I would like the opportunity to have more neighbors, for that property to maintain single-family homes so that behind me is just more neighbors, more people, more friends, a larger community for Corinth, that's what I, that's what I envisioned for that. The, the plan has changed, as plans do, the property to the north has become something different than it was, and to no fault of the developer, things change. So we're looking at a, at a comp plan that isn't a comp plan and, and hoping that we can still make it fit. I mean, ideally, single-family homes is, is what we're looking for here. And again, I, I share the, the same, the, the same goal, I'm not really against the apartments, it's just the location. If we're going to build 600 apartments, or excuse me, 579 apartments in the middle of a, the spiritual and physical heart of a multi-thousand family, uh, single-family home homestead, it just seems out of place. That would really be kind of the worst decision, right? Looking at it all together, why would we, why would we put one inside of the other? Just continue the single-family homes. And I would, again, and as for the landowner, I would really love him to be able to sell his property, and I was hoping we could come to some other kind of agreement, but at this point, it seems unnecessary to change the zoning, because that's what we're really talking about tonight, is actually the zoning change. And if the city and P&amp;Z have both denied the application, it seems relevant to change the zoning at this point. I also agree with Earlene as far as the, the cap for 65 and older for, for taxes, I think that's something we should do, let people own their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Dale.
My name's Jared Dale, I live at 2807 Goodnight Trail. I don't really want to go after everybody else now. I, I've been a resident for about 15 years and I too believe that we should just be focusing on single-family residents rather than putting apartment buildings. The developer on his presentation really glossed over the four-story senior family living, or senior living facility, as well as the other larger apartments, and focused primarily on the big house, what those would look like, as well as the small number of single-family residences that were included in his plan. While you're taking this into consideration, I just ask you to, to look introspectively and ask yourself, if the voters had imagined that you were going to be voting in favor of an apartment complex in the middle of single-family residents, do you, do you think that's what the voters really were, were envisioning when they elected you to your positions? As well, I also support the freezing of the senior taxes, that's, that's frightening. You know, I have, I have two senior citizen parents who don't live in this city, but they may soon, and I would, I would be very frightened for them if they were to move here and have to experience their taxes constantly and ever increasing, increasingly going up where they could live somewhere else and it would be frozen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Clark. Please take your name and your address, please, for the records.
Yes, can everybody hear me okay? 20, Mike Clark, 2709 Parkview Drive in Corinth. Ladies and gentlemen, I am against this zoning change on Lake Sharon, I've lived in this, near this immediate area for about 10 years. We already have the big development on Lake Sharon and I-35 that's not even built yet. There's a development being built across the street right now of single-family houses. So what is this area going to look like in five years when all this is built? The traffic and all the development. The traffic and all the development. Not enough housing. Lake Dallas Planning and Zoning Commission just approved 390 apartments on Swisher and Shady Shores. It's in Lake Dallas, but it's close to us. Again, more traffic, higher taxes. Consider this question. Do we want to be more like Flower Mound in Hickory Creek? Or do we want to be more like Denton and Houston and Louisville that have a lot of taxes, they're constantly building new schools, there's just too many people, too much density? This is a round peg in a square hole. Granting this request will result in a flood or requests for all kinds of changes, more zoning changes. Another thing I'd like to see considered, any future apartments, just be two-story, not three or four. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. David Johnson. Please take your name and your address for the records, please.
My name is David Johnson. I live in 2805 Hollis Drive, Corinth, Texas. Me and my family have been longtime residents here, about 26 years now. I've raised two daughters, have gone through the school system here. I'd like to see them choose to stick around here, right? I've heard a lot throughout the different workshops and meetings that they've had about this development, and I come to one conclusion, it just doesn't make sense. There's been a lot of changes to the zoning plan, and I'm not here to argue those changes. I think they're all made for very good reason, right? That there are economic development opportunities for the city, and changing the zoning on the north end of Lake Sharon was the right thing to do. But given some of those changes that we've had, the current plan for multifamily south on Lake Sharon just clearly no longer makes sense, right? I recently sat in one of the workshops here about police and fire budget. How is this going to impact that? I know there's stress for taxes, taxes are going up to, you know, the max you can, right? Without making a big announcement. How much more do we need to push city services? I mean, we clearly do not need to push them any further. You know, that's about all I have, and if anything we can be doing for our seniors, we should be certainly doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Head.
Hello. Brian Head, 2700 Warwick Drive. I've been a resident of Corinth for over 26 years. And I was at the August 4th workshop portion of the meeting when even the council discussed the Envision Corinth Plan, and that it was outdated. They also decided that, at that time, that it would probably not be a wise decision to go over it and update it to reflect decisions that have been made until a new city manager is put in place. So with that, then there should be no, there should be no zoning changes either. I currently, until that can be updated. I currently live next to Amherst, that's PD 41 on your thing, it's off of Park Ridge, and that neighborhood has 50 houses on 14 acres. If you do the math, that'd be 207 houses on this 58 acres. We've heard the 2.5 million property tax over and over and over. What's not included, what we don't hear is there's 350 houses within 500 feet of that. They're all going to be able to see these three- and four-story monsters. They're not going anywhere for 50 years. Property values are going to go down. Those 350 houses, 10% reduction in property tax, yeah, 350 houses, at the 352K average value of the house in Corinth, that's almost 300,000 reduction in property tax. You take those 207 houses, the ones behind me in Amherst, they're ranging from 576 to 740K, 655K each. I have a list of houses that are for sale with prices, so they're not rentals. And if you take that, the 655K, let's drop to 600K, 207 houses, that is 2.9 million, 2.9 million property tax. That's more. Some other things that he mentions, 100 single-family houses, 51 school-aged children. 100 multifamily, 31 school-aged children. He drops it. That's, I see, it's less, it's less, multifamily less. But what he doesn't tell you is when you multiply that out over 207 or 579 units, that's actually almost twice as many kids with his plan. Traffic, 957, 9.57 trips per single-family, 6.72 trips per multifamily. You do the math on that, that's 4,000 trips for his development versus 2,000 trips per weekday if you made these single-family houses. And my daughter just bought a house, 360,000. She's paying about what he wants to charge for rent, 2,400 to 2,600 for property tax, insurance, and mortgage.
Thank you. Orland Chohtivs.
2015 Yellowstone Lane in Corinth, Texas. Ladies and gentlemen, I live here already three years, four years, and I still feel like a rookie. I still feel the need to thank everyone who was part of building this fantastic, nice, safe town. Sir, prices are going up. Allow me also to thank you and to pay my respect for the great jobs you guys did. This is a fantastic project. We don't have an argument with you and your company. We, as a community, seem to need to define, redefine our idea of Corinth. We didn't know. I guess that's the reason why this project is dragging feet for so long. They should have told you, we don't build apartments here, period. We don't want that. Our citizens don't want that type of life. But we didn't know. That's my theory. And I think it's time for us, as a community, to decide, to make some referendum, and decide that this town will not be Dallas, it won't be Denton, it won't be Fort Worth. There are plenty of big cities where you can build apartment complexes. We are not also, we are not guilty for the raising prices, for the inflation. It's not our fault, and it's not our fault neither that millions are coming to Texas from failing states into a state that is doing well. This community, I call everyone to decide for themselves. Let's preserve it, like those sparks. We don't want building here. If we allow, let it be individual houses. A house cannot be taken by, mandated by the government to host, to house, to offer affordable housing. An apartment building can. And then you will get your money, or whoever is the managing company. The affordable people will get their apartments, will get the crime. They are now forcing hotel owners to host illegal people. Why couldn't next, they do the same with apartment complexes? 10 apartments for illegal immigrants. For that reason, I oppose this suggestion, this project, and I suggest to our representatives to build.
Thank you. Is it Heather Kanopka?
Good evening. Yes, it's Heather Kanopka, 4101 William D. Tate in Grapevine. I am not a Corinth resident. I have been working with a lot of the landowners for the last seven years, and developers, and worked closely with Helen Eve Kemley-Horn in the Envision Corinth 2040 Plan. So I was definitely part of that, and I love your community. Love to see what's taken place. I worked with Boyd Taylor, Ricky Taylor, Mr. Omo Blount, worked with Dr. Haslip, and knowing Dr. Baum through all of this. I ask that you consider approving this project and think of the landowners, the landowners that have been here for quite some time and they're ready. Along Post Oak, you know, Mr. Fletcher didn't get to see his. You've got that whole development that's in the works. You know, this is a beautiful project, Azvalo Real Estate does a beautiful job in building and constructing, and something will get built on this 58 acres at some point in time. It is a beautiful project that has long-term ownership, and I hope that you'll really consider it and think of the landowners. They've really been through the wringer, and they get tired. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have here 19 requests, but they did not want to speak tonight, and they were opposed to this particular project. Okay, at this time, I would ask the developer, do you have any salient points you want to respond to at the podium?
Mister gentleman with IT, can I get my presentation back up if you can hear me? Thank you. That's magic. Okay. Okay, so I will try to address many of these. So I did, first of all, I have the gas well, there's actually two well heads, under contract to cap. So I can cap that. It's an extremely expensive endeavor, especially with gas prices as high as they are. So that is an option. I can definitely cap that well. And the proposal that I presented in the Planning and Zoning Commission workshop showed residential buildings in that setback because that anticipates capping of the well. The presentation that I am proposing, or excuse me, the site plan I'm proposing can go either way. I can cap the well and still have the big green space, or I can leave the well open and still have that green space. So it can go either way. If council decides you will approve this, if you cap that well, I'll cap it. I'm prepared to do that. But I wanted to have that option, and that's one of the reasons I went back to this plan after going, after presenting a brand-new site plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission, because that's a big item, and I know there's different opinions on if we should cap it or if we shouldn't cap it, so I'm open to either one. In a neighborhood meeting, I talked about, somebody asked me, do you ever rent short-term? And I said, yeah, sometimes people will be building a house and they need to stay a few extra months, and I will rent to them month-to-month. And what I later explained to the individual who mentioned that was that that was after they have signed a one-year lease typically, we'll let them stay on month-to-month. We don't bring people in to rent month-to-month because it's too expensive. We do rent to, sometimes companies will rent an apartment for years, and they'll bring in their visitors that are, you know, that are attending from out of state some meeting or whatever it is. So those people might come and go. But in general, 99% of our leases are, you know, around one year. And our people typically stay for two to three years. So what happened was, I kept being, I was asked over and over again, I hear you're going to have people come in and going, like they're, it's going to be a transient community, there's going to be people coming and going all the time, you know, staying very, very short-term. And I explained that multiple times to people, that this is not that. This is a traditional, people stay two to three years, and many times much longer. So that's the answer to that comment. One gentleman questioned my calculation of what it costs to buy a home, and that's why I referenced my numbers that I used, which I think are all good assumptions. But you can make different assumptions and come to a different conclusion, I guess, but I pulled my mortgage rate yesterday from the average US rate. I used, I looked up every single assumption there that comes up with what is standard, and I went conservative. The average, the average first-time home buyer does not have 20% and has to pay PMI. They usually have, I think it's somewhere in the range of 8% to 10% is typical. But I put 15 to be a little bit more conservative. So anyhow, and that includes property tax and insurance, and I got a quote on insurance from an insurance broker. So I think those numbers are correct, and I'm happy to provide references if that's I did a traffic study last year, and the traffic study showed that, I have a slide in here on the traffic study, which most of the people have seen. Oh, yeah, here's the traffic study. So on average, or actually, no, this is not the traffic study. Traffic impact analysis. Lake Sharon mixed residential is expected to generate approximately 257 new weekday AM peak hour one-way vehicle trips and 310 new weekday PM peak hour one-way vehicle trips at build-out. So once it's built and residents occupy, basically, if you stand on Lake Sharon Drive, which is where the majority of traffic will go, you know, well over 90% is just going to go to Lake Sharon and go where they need to go. And this does not take into account the residents south or east of us that will be coming into the property to get onto Lake Sharon. This only calculates the additional traffic created by the residents on this property. So if you're standing on Lake Sharon, there will be one additional vehicle every 14 seconds and every 11.6 seconds in the evening. So there aren't very many vehicles. When you look at the overall number, it's a lot, but when you spread it out over the entire day, it's just, it's not, it's not going to jam up Lake Sharon Drive. And I heard two or three people mention impact on Lake Dallas ISD. So I will say, I think somebody mentioned this previously, but this is an older study, but I will also quote something more current. "On average, 100 single-family owner-occupied houses include 51 school-aged children. By contrast, apartments are attractive to single people, couples without children and empty nesters, which is why 100 apartment units average just 31 children." So that compares 100 apartment units to 100 single-family units. So it's apples-to-apples on how many children. This will cause, so now, if you're, but you couldn't build as many single-family homes because they take up less space. So that is true, that there would be more homes, more families, and that would generate more children. But 100 single-family and 100 apartments, that is, those are the numbers. And this will cause less strain on schools while improving them with the extra tax revenue as apartment owners often pay more in property tax compared to single-family homes. I had a conversation with Wes Eversole, the CFO of Lake Dallas ISD, and he said the following about the impact of this project. He said, "The projected growth with the current developments is 1% to 1.5%." And he also said, "Without development, our growth would actually decline due to the number of students that graduate and leave Corinth, the parents stay and become empty nesters." So he actually was concerned about not having development in Corinth because there will be a decline in students, and the majority of their new students are coming from the new development projects, just because it's smaller, are younger families. And then he also said, "We don't feel like the growth is something we can't absorb." Another gentleman mentioned, "Property values go down with apartments." I have seen studies that show that property values do not go down with apartments, with Class A apartments. If you have affordable housing, you can see that, and if you have, you know, old apartments and rundown apartments, you can see a correlation, but with Class A apartments, you don't see that. And so that's what, I've seen two studies, and I'm happy to pull those up and share them, but you can Google that. I've never seen anything that says property values go down with Class A apartments. Oh, and then the last item I'll address is, a gentleman mentioned- Oh, and then the last item I'll address is, a gentleman mentioned, "We don't want this to become like Dallas or like other heavily populated areas that have multifamily residents." And, let's see, let me pull up one slide on that. Here we go. So this is, this is comparing Corinth and Lake Cities to the counties around us. So the percent of multifamily by population, so if you take the number of multifamilies and divide that by population, these are the percentages you get. So Corinth has 5.63% and Denton County, Tarrant County, and Collin County and DFW Metro all have over 11%. So Corinth and Lake Cities have nearly half of that. And if you look at numerous cities around that aren't Dallas or, you know, larger communities, just going from distance from Corinth, it's sorted by distance, there are a lot of cities that are even smaller than Corinth that have more multifamily. And so there's quite a bit of cities that have significantly more multifamily as a percent of population. Another thing of note is that Corinth vacancy is 2.8% and most cities don't reach that. That is basically every unit is full. Because when you turn a unit, you have to take two days to clean it, to repaint, to touch up and do whatever you do, assuming you're a good property manager. So you always have a couple days of a vacancy and so you end up in that kind of 1% to 3% vacancy if you're always full. So what that says is there's a very high demand for people that want to live here in apartments. And I believe that what I'm providing is something that's different than what else is available in Corinth. Not only the seniors, but also a very high, high-level Class A multifamily project. So those are my comments. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council?
I do, Mayor. You, Mr. Shawn, yes, sir. You made the, mentioned several times that, you know, say what, say what wanted, needed to be changed and that you could change things. And one thing that I'm hearing over and over and over tonight, first off is the four-story building. I love the retirement area, I think it's great. But if we, if you could take away that four-story building and then the three-story apartments, I mean, I don't know if that's something that's doable or not doable, but I really think that that's just not a good fit to have the four-story apartment building and the three-story right, right there in the middle of the neighborhood. So that may be something, I don't know if that's something that's doable, but I did hear you say several times just to tell you what, what we needed or what would work.
Yes, thank you. So switching from big house to townhomes is a little bit easier than that request and here's why. But I'm not saying I'm not willing. The seniors, when you have four stories or even five stories, they can be in a tighter area and they don't have to walk as far. It's less expensive to build a smaller community, but the further they have to walk to get to the common areas is less interesting, right? Because they, this is independent living, it's not nursing home or, but sometimes people still have problems with, you know, joints and walking long distances, but they can still live on their own. And so it's in the best interest of the community to be at four stories. Plus I, plus it's, the overall cost is higher with elevators. Now, with that said, if what it takes to get this project passed means I have to take that four-story down to three stories and I, you're saying, you're saying, if, I know you're not proposing this for approval, but you're, did you ask me if I would remove all of the three-story apartments? So I would take the senior community down to three stories, remove the three-story apartments, they're like garden-style, and then replace those with other townhomes? Is that...
What I was saying was remove the four-story and three-story.
Oh, remove it completely?
Yes.
Oh, so no senior living center? Is that what you're...
Do not have a senior living center that was one-story? I mean, I heard what you...
Oh, yeah, you definitely could, but it's one-story and that's harder. You typically don't do stairs with age-restricted. It's not common to have one-story except when it's, when there's more like medical facilities involved. So we would, we would likely just not do that project and it could be all, all, you know, townhomes and multifamily. But I wouldn't do a one-story senior living, because they would just have to walk so far to get to the common area unless I were going to go to a nursing home or something with more medical assistance required.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. You keep saying Class A, a Class A, what qualifies that as Class A? Because just by looking at some of the slides, the majority of your renderings are, it's almost all like siding, there's very little masonry. So I was just curious as to what qualifies your product as a Class A.
Let's see, can we pull up my presentation? Oh, there we go. So Class A is typically determined by, it's typically determined by the overall finishes. Now, well, let me show you, before I show you that, let me just show you the, so this is actually, I was showing you the 3D picture, but this is what the finishes would be. This is what we are proposing in the PD application.
That, that's very little masonry, right?
Yes, yes, it is, just on the bottom portion and siding and, yeah. And then these are the buildings. So this has a little bit more masonry, but anyhow, the, typically it's high-quality finishes. So all of these are high-quality, that last a very long time. Where you get into the Class A versus a Class B, you kind of have to meet a minimum standard of high-quality finishes. If it's like an all-stucco building, typically that's hard to get a Class A rating. But the biggest thing that influences, like, once you kind of hit the standard of, for example, you have granite or quartz countertops, you have, you know, quality carpet, quality flooring, you know, those basics, right? But then it's all about the amenities. And the amenities is what sets you apart more than anything else. This will have one of the best amenity packages. So with that said...
A lot of those amenity packages, though, from what I understand, is geared towards the senior. Like a lot of the things, like the theater and things like that, that would be in your senior living, not for your, your residence of other multifamily dwellings. Is that correct?
There are senior-exclusive amenities. The theater would not be one of those, although we could potentially put a theater in the senior, but the theater that we will definitely do is in the larger clubhouse.
I see.
Which the seniors will also have access to. So the seniors will have access to their own, so for example, the seniors will have a commercial kitchen where they can cook for large groups, typically within the community. And that, nobody else will have access to that except for residents there. They can invite guests, but the rest of the multifamily won't have access to that. They'll have, you know, hobby rooms and, you know, they'll have their own dog park, they'll have their own pool, they'll have, so they will have a number of exclusive amenities, but the majority of the amenities are actually in the general multifamily operation, like all the, obviously the sports courts and the dog wash will be in a, in a, in a area where everyone can access it. So there's, we call it a paw spa, it's got, it's just kind of a salon for a dog. And anyhow, so, yeah, most of them are actually the majority of multifamily.
Okay.
And then what I was going to show you here is, these are the other projects. This is according to a industry-standard organization called CoStar. They have Apartments.com, you've probably heard of that website. And so they grade every unit. They have insight into most apartment communities based on a variety of different services they offer, namely, marketing. So almost everybody requires to market on Apartments.com. So these two are Class B. This is a, let's see, so Tower Ridge, 2560 Tower Ridge Drive, 3440 Corinth Parkway, Autumn Oaks of Corinth. These two are on Garrison Road and Corinth Street, both also Class B. Those are both market rent. And then this is a Class A built in 2000 and Class A built in 2019. So according to CoStar, the only Class A built in the last 20 years is Millennium Place. And I believe, yeah, this is an affordable, on Tower Ridge, this is an affordable and rent-restricted project and so is Autumn Oaks of Corinth. So this is age-restricted, or excuse me, oh, yeah, this is senior, market and affordable and rent-restricted. They have 76 affordable units. So that's kind of the summary of what I found in Corinth. So I don't know if that's, does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. Any other question? Okay, entertain a motion undecided.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to...
Okay, at this time, a closed public hearing. Entertain a motion undecided.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to deny resolution number 22-09-15-22. I'm sorry. Hold on one second, I folded my piece of paper wrong. Make a motion to deny zoning case, number ZAPD22-002, Lake Sharon Mixed Residential Development.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Mayor, I have some comments.
Okay, Mister Burke.
First, I'd like to thank you for coming to our town and investing a lot of your time and energy trying to develop a plan that was consistent with what you hoped we would want and bring a quality product to our town. And so I want to take a few minutes to kind of give you my feedback. It's zoned for single-family, so the landowner has the right to do that. Anytime you're talking about putting apartment complexes and senior living in or around a gas well, it would certainly make a big difference to me if it was capped. And I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable with any development around that if the gas well was capped. I think there is a need in our town for additional senior living. I like that product offering. I have concern about the height. You know, the, what we've contemplated as far as anything of that height, much closer to the 35 corridor, as part of our TOD or in our Agora District is a better fit. I would be concerned about that height and that location. Three stories would be closer. I would still have some concerns. Two stories is easy because there's two-story houses all over this town and you can anticipate either now or in 20 years, you're going to, you might be living next to a two-story house and that's just what you should expect. The, because of Ashford Park, because of our transition to the TOD over here, the Agora, I think the three-story apartments that are in the center of your development, I don't think this is a good fit in that location any longer. We have concerns about absorption on some projects that we have approved. You know, I think you're probably close if you're not right about what CoStar shows is on the ground, but a lot of things have been approved and are coming and we want to make sure that we attract retail in the right spots. And the Lake Sharon Central Corridor is shown in our comp plan. It just didn't develop that way and that's not really consistent with how we anticipate it'll develop or how we want it to. We want that density more towards the city center. I personally, I can't speak for the other folks that are going to vote, I am not bothered by the big-house concept. I like the idea that it does not appear to be a townhome. I have some concerns about long-term how that would be owned, but that's not something that we can regulate and I understand that. But I don't want you leaving here thinking that the appearance of that is offensive, at least to me. I like the idea that it appears to be more like a single-family home and I think that provides an opportunity for a cleaner transition from traditional single-family homes to apartment-style projects. So for me, the priorities would be the gas well. The more single-family buffer you can provide between the current single-family and the big-house concept, the better. In other words, for instance, if the exterior lane was bordered on both sides by single-family, that would give me even greater comfort about that being a natural transition from the existing development. And the concern for the elevation on the active living. And a big part of what you're proposing are some really pretty excellent amenities, which I'd be excited for our residents to have. And it would make a difference to me. If you lose all this density and you can't offer those amenities, I understand that, but that would also have a negative impact, at least on my view of the project. Those are important and I appreciate that you offered them.
I've got a comment too, Mister Mayor. So in general, the reason why I made a motion to deny this zoning request is twofold. First, when we did the 2040 Corinth Plan, the understanding of that plan was that we would take a look at every piece of open land and decide, once property owners started selling, what could this area look like once the property owners started selling? And quite honestly, we went six years with property owners not willing to sell, which is why there's not restaurants in Corinth. And we support that right and we are very happy that the property owners are able to make that decision and to raise grandkids on the farm with horses and everything else that they wanted to do. But the Corinth 2040 vision was an idea of what could happen if any one of these areas started to sell and to develop. And what we found ourselves in is the last two years, every property owner wanted to sell. And some just did it faster, I think is ultimately what happened. And not only that, I'm very proud to be able to announce that the Agora District, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard this before, but it's the only development north of Lake Lewisville that has any participation with the county to get economic development rolling the way that we would like to see it in Corinth. And when I say "we," I mean the citizens that participated in the 2040 plan and the citizens that we talk with on a daily basis. And that includes unique restaurants, right? Like our restaurants. And so we have a $27 million investment from Denton County to participate in the Agora District and that Agora District is where we anticipate the majority, if not all, of the density and the walkability in the park and the amphitheater and everything else that we're excited about. It's on the highway, it's towards the outskirts of our community and this is where we find ourselves. And I think normally, we would not be in this position. We would have had five years to change the 2040 vision, but seeing as how every property owner, it seems, is selling and want to develop at the same time, changing zoning, given the totality of everything that's been happening in Corinth and the speed at which it's been happening, is not something that I would support.
Anybody else have comment?
I would just like to say that I agree 100% with Councilman Burke about, and I love your senior living concept, I really do, and I'd love to see that somewhere in our town. I just don't think that that four-story building and the three-story apartments is, that Lake Sharon is the place for that. So if this doesn't go through, I'd love to see you consider our town somewhere else for your senior living apartments.
I don't want to sound redundant, but you and I have had talks and I told you that I did have a concern about that four-story and even the three-story. I think the big-house concept, I think it's unique and I think, I agree with Councilmember Henderson that I would love to see that in our city. I just don't know if that is the right place for it with the way that it developed, like Councilmember Burke and Councilmember Garber have said, it, that developed and these, these large parcels of land were selling quickly and getting zoning applications and development applications in pretty quick. So it just, it just kind of changed. So I think you build a really nice product and I think the big-house is, like I said, super unique and... super unique, and I hope that you would consider Corinth for a development, but just maybe not right there.
Any other comments?
One more, Mayor. Thank you. I wanted to thank our citizens, too, for coming out, and we appreciate your feedback. And I want to thank you for the way that you spoke tonight, respectful of the landowner and respectful of the developer. When people come here to develop, I want them to be treated with respect. You don't attract top-quality developers if you treat them with disrespect. And I'll just be honest with you, when people are treated with disrespect, it makes it more likely that I'll do what they want to do. I'm honorary like that. So I appreciate that the developer was treated with respect, and I would hope that that would continue. That when you speak to us about the merits of a project on objective criteria like you did tonight, it's easy to listen to when people are disrespectful or just, you know, bringing up silly stuff. It makes it hard to listen to. So thank you for your comments tonight and the manner in which they were made.
Again, I would like to express my thoughts as far as, thank you for coming out and being, this is what's great about the City of Corinth, that we have citizens that get behind the cause and they let us know what it is, and this council is very open to listening. And I think that we'll find out in a few minutes, okay? So cast your vote.
Mayor, I wanted to, because we had so much discussion, before anybody goes pushing buttons, I made a motion to deny. So a vote of yes would be yes to deny. A vote of no would mean that you do not agree with the deny.
Item number six, conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and act on the proposed amendment to the city's Unified Development Code regarding subsection 2.07.03. Use chart, subsection 2.09.02. Tree preservation, subsection 3.03.03. Final plat, subsection 4.01.15. General sign requirements and subsection 5.02. Words and terms defined. Mrs. Bunzelmeier.
Yes, thank you. Our planning director or Development Services Director, John Welb, will make a representation.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping all these people turned out tonight for my presentation on some strategic amendments to Unified Development Code.
Well, John, I'm sure that we'll hear from them again, once it's close to their property and they don't like it.
This will be the first of several, what we kind of call some strategic amendments, as I've come on board and looked how we operate and looking for ways to be more efficient, looking at some issues that we want to continue to improve community image. I know how much you love to hear Michelle talk about tree preservation, so I want to make sure she had a little bit of opportunity tonight. She's agreed to keep very quickly. What generated this is that we were approached by a company that wanted to bring to the city the first commercial drone delivery service. And this is where they would locate as an accessory use to an existing business, and it would be a manned operation where they would get an order to pick up typically food and have that flown to a residence. And there would be preapproval, the resident would have to be there at time. Typically, the drone would drop off this prepackaged food in the rear yard of a homeowner. I don't know if the gentleman's here tonight that is proposing that business, but we did not have really a place in the zoning ordinance to accommodate that. And so we want to amend the use chart to allow this service in Corinth. We feel like it's an economic benefit to the city and also provide a define, a definition for it.
Hold a second.
So, sign ordinance. I don't know why, but years ago, cities decided that they should regulate the minimum height of letters of the sign. Many businesses would like to put the size of the sign in the logo and not really care about the size of the letters. We felt that was a little overreach, so we want to remove that minimum letter size. We do have maximum letter size. In the ordinance, there's some conflicting about landscaping around the monument signs. If you saw what CoServe did on their monument sign, it looks very attractive, so there's some conflict of that, in these instances, you have to put some landscaping around a monument sign, but these instances, you do not. So we feel like that landscaping around the monument sign is a very small cost compared to the overall landscaping, and really kind of covers up that base of the sign and adds some attraction. We do not regulate window signs in the city. We're one of the few cities in the metroplex that doesn't have any indication of how many signs that you can put on the front of a building. This business is not in Corinth, but we are seeing businesses further, what I call clutter up the signs. It's a safety aspect. It helps for customers and public safety officials to be able to see into the building, and it just really, to me, is a visual clutter. So we've recommended a 25% maximum, which is fairly consistent with most of the cities. Going through our final plat, we want to expedite how staff can file the plat with the county. So we have amended some of our signature blocks. We did not take them out, Patricia, but we just amended the signature blocks, so they're still in the ordinance. But there's some issues where, with the staff and the city secretary, we can sign off finally on the plats. We don't have to go track down the chairman of the P&amp;Z to sign the plat. So it's just something that we can, when the plat is ready to go, you know, we can internally get it signed and take it to the county. So with that, I'm going to turn to Michelle, and she, within 30 seconds, is going to go through the tree.
Okay. Gosh, I do promise this will be fast. And I, as always, I know there's excitement on the other end, so...
My fellow councilmembers thought we were done talking about trees.
Yes, this is, so you all know that we adopted the tree ordinance in May, and as we've gone through, we've noticed a few things that were, needed to be clarified. So one of the things would be to clarify how to measure a multi-stemmed tree. That was, that was actually a textual mishap on our strike-through and delete. So the preservation credits, we wanted to clarify when they would not be offered. It was silent, so we wanted to clarify that within utility easements, we would not be offering credits, because utility providers have the option of, you know, removing the trees, so why would we give credits in that location? So we just wanted to point that out. Drainage easements, where underground and/or surface structures or other appurtenances are located or proposed. Trees identified to be moved within a tree, within a drainage study. So we wanted to just be upfront and transparent. We wanted to indicate that we would offer credits for tree preservation within the floodplain area when it's proposed to be not disturbed and remain in a natural state and incorporated into a natural feature as an amenity as part of the site design. That wasn't stated in the ordinance, so we just wanted to bring that out. We wanted to clarify that, and I want to make sure you all are okay with this, that the standard deduction would apply to the remaining mitigation requirements with the exception of the mitigation required for the heritage trees, and that the heritage tree mitigation, the cap, would remain constant at 50%. When we talked about it early on, we didn't, there was, there's a glitch in the way that we had talked about it. There's a standard deduction at the end where you can take off any remaining credit based upon this, you know, whatever percentage that you're saving. And that would actually reduce, by applying that, that was reducing that 50% cap on heritage trees beyond the 50%. So we wanted to change the language so that there's no question, because that's quite impactful. And then lastly, the requirement for a financial guarantee to be provided for the replanting of mitigation trees if mass grading occurs on a site and the development is proposed in phases. We, that was in there to some degree, but we wanted to clarify, because if you have a project in phases, you allow them to have a grading permit, and they start clearing everything, there's no guarantee. We require the fee upfront, so I'll give Ashford Park as an example. We required the $95,000 for the, for their mitigation, and then they also agreed to replant just about the same. They're doing that in phases, and they also preserved. Well, there is no guarantee that those phases will occur, and we've just now allowed that mitigation. So that was a loophole that we wanted to capture. They are moving forward, so everything is good with Ashford Park. I just used them as an example.
So Michelle, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Your recommendation is to change it by the property that's currently being developed, not the tract as a whole. Meaning, what you just said was that they promised future mitigation as things would develop?
Yes.
Not immediately?
Yes, and, yes. So for example, we allowed for mitigation, and they show it on their landscape plan in the future phases, and they cleared all the trees, they paid for a portion that they were required, but there's no guarantee that they could go belly up and, you know, we don't want that.
Mayor, any questions of us? And this is a public hearing. We'd be glad to answer any questions later on, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any questions of the council? Okay, I'm opening this public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this ordinance? Nope? Closed public hearing at this time. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the request that amendments are submitted and direct staff to prepare an ordinance for a future meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Did anybody find Mr. Holzner? He must have went home. Okay. All right. What's that?
I bet he's outside telling a story.
Oh, okay. Okay, can we just continue on? All right. Okay, item number nine, consider an act on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Corinth, Texas, amending various sections of chapter 33, boards, commissions, and departments of Title III Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corinth to provide for amendments related to the membership of the Keep Corinth Beautiful Commission, adding a member to the commission and providing for a subcommittee of this commission to serve as the Parks and Recreation Board, providing for the related amendments and providing an effective date. Mrs. Bunzelmeier.
Yes, thank you. So what this agenda item does is it merges the Keep Corinth Beautiful and the Parks Board. It also authorizes us to have a subcommittee of the new Keep Corinth Beautiful Commission to serve as the Parks and Rec Board. Additionally, as was requested by the council when we did our board interviews, this also increases the membership of the committee from nine places to 10. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question from council? Entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance 22-09-15-32, combining Keep Corinth Beautiful Commission and the Parks and Recreation Board.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 10, consider an act on the nomination, appointment, resignation, and removal of board commissions and committee members. Mrs. Bunzelmeier.
So in August, we had three evenings where we conducted interviews of potential board, commission, and committee members. In front of you is a listing of those boards, places, and the individuals that the city council would like to place on those boards. As a motion, you do not have to list each individual person. You could just say that you agree to the listing, and we will make sure that those names are in the minutes.
Is there any question from council? Entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the list of appointees to the boards, commissions, and committees for 2022, '23, and to include the list in the meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 11, consider an act on the appointment of the chair and vice chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mrs. Bunzelmeier.
Yes, one of the duties of the council is to appoint a chair and vice chair for the Plannings and Zoning Commission, and so at this time, we would just request for the council to make that nomination.
Mayor, I'm, Mayor, I would move to appoint Alan Nelson as chair and Mark Klingel as vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of one year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. You got a vote?
You got a vote.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, item number 12, city manager's contract.
Mayor, I would...
Mrs. Bunzelmeier.
Yes, so we did submit a copy of a contract for an appointment of a new city manager to the city council earlier this week. So at this time, if the council would like to make a motion to approve the contract for the candidate of the council's choice.
I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the contract submitted to Scott Campbell for the position of city manager beginning October 3rd, 2022.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote.
I can't.
My hand is ready. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, council's comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and/or staff, on any issue or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir, I just, for those of you that decided to stay, wanted to thank you, because it's this, staying past the thing that got everybody here, that ultimately makes the city a much better place. And while we appreciate the input and things when things are contested and there's a zoning case, that our residents feel may potentially be approved, it's the energy that's put in after the fact in this kind of one-on-one. So I wanted to thank the four of you for staying till the end of the meeting. Plus, you get to hear, I guess, the news first. Scott Campbell is going to be our new city manager. He's from the city of Roanoke. Over the last 10 years, has been instrumental in turning Roanoke into the unique dining capital of Texas. And unfortunately, through the passing of Bob Hart, it led us to the opportunity to be able to attract somebody like Scott Campbell, and so it was, it was quite a long journey to get here, but we are quite excited. He'll start somewhere around the first part of October.
Mrs. Henderson.
Yes, sir, as always, I want to remind the council that we're having the ribbon cutting for Enterprise on September 29th. I believe it starts at 4:00, and they have, they have asked me if I could, if I had any contact with the mayor and council to see if they would come. So I would like to ask y'all to please show up and any of the staff that could be there, that would be really good. And also...
Is that a guilt trip?
No, they didn't.
Okay.
I was, anyway, and also, I want to thank Leanne for giving us the opportunity at Pumpkin Palooza for the cornhole tournament. I think that's real exciting, and I think everyone here should get a team and go play.
Mrs. Pickens.
I just have, I'd like to kind of say what Scott said, that I appreciate y'all coming out here, and mad props to Arlene. She's the only one that shows up to our HOA annual board meetings, too. Thank y'all, and thank you first, to staff for working on that. I know that y'all put in a lot of time and effort, and Michelle, hopefully, we won't have to talk about trees again.
Please, I'm not sure if this is appropriate time, but you had made a comment about putting things on your agenda for your next meeting, so my only question is, the issue about possibly freezing the tax rate for the seniors, can you put that on the agenda? Is this not the proper time to ask that?
It's not, but we normally add that once a year before budget season. So sign up for the listserv, and you'll be able to see that hit, usually a workshop session.
Because I didn't see it on the minutes, that's why I didn't sign up to speak.
It's not.
So it will not be on, I can't request for it to be on your, in your next meeting?
No, ma'am, we...
You don't have a budget meeting?
Yes, ma'am, next year, before we start our budget process.
That's in probably about June or July of next year.
Next year?
Yep.
Just so you know, we analyze that every year.
Do you really?
Yes, and the part that goes unsaid is that if you do that, there's a couple of different vehicles. If you freeze them in the technical sense, they're forever frozen. And if your senior population goes up, you can put yourself in a position where you cannot balance the budget. And we don't print money here in Corinth. We have to balance our budget like the state does.
There's more younger people than us dinosaurs in town.
And the young people, not dinosaurs, would be the ones paying the difference. And when we analyzed it in the past, it didn't look like a good choice. But we analyze it every year, and we invite you to come and participate.
Thank you. I appreciate it, because I didn't know whether it was appropriate to even ask. I didn't even know it was going to be on here until I read it on the Next Door Neighbor app about someone was asking for people to show up to please speak about it. And I thought, yeah, I'll go there, because I thought it's only appropriate, you know? I'm in the dinosaur section, and I've been here for 25 years. I love it.
Yep, and that's what Corinth's all about. We want you to speak. So, again, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank LeAnn Bunzelmeier for the interim city manager's role that she played here for the City of Corinth. You know, it's unfortunate, we lost Bob, but LeAnn stepped right up, and she did a great job in keeping everybody on focus and on track and keeping momentum going, and we wouldn't be where we're at today if it wasn't for LeAnn. So again, thank you so much. And I know that she also has a great staff that supports her, and again, we want to thank each and every one of you for all the things you do every day to keep this city the city it is today. And again, we're proud to represent you up here on the diocese and just keep up the great work. With that, we're adjourned.